Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the March 23 regularly scheduled City Council meeting. Before we go any farther, I'd like to ask anybody who is joining us via telephone lines, please mute your line for us. And Ms. McGrew, would you mind explaining what the guidelines and procedures are for tonight's meeting?
This evening, for all of those attending via telephone, we will have a comment period for each item before it is discussed by council and voted upon. When we open that public speaking, you will have to speak one at a time, list your name, address, and you will have three minutes to speak on the item. If you're able to connect with us through Zoom, there is also a chat function where you can submit your questions or comments. And you are welcome to email me, citysecretary@cityofkatie.com if you're having issues.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. McGrew, at this time, will you go ahead and call roll, please, ma'am?
Mayor Bill Hastings.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Chris Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Janet Court.
Here.
Councilmember Duran Dowdell.
Here.
Councilmember Jennifer Jordan Stockdick.
Here.
If you have a forum.
Thank you, ma'am. Tonight's invocation will be led by Reverend Pat Sparks with St. Peter's United Methodist Church. Reverend Sparks?
Even in these moments, we'd like to bless the City Council, bless the mayor and state director, and we would ask that even though the world seems to be so different now, that we somehow, by your leadership, find out how we can be a community, that we can continue to share, that we can continue to love, to encourage one another. Bless this meeting and all those who participate. We pray that it's been right.
Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend Sparks. Tonight, we will have Corporal Ravi El Pena with the Katy Police Department lead us in the pledge to the U.S. and the Texas flag.
Please pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please pledge allegiance to the flag. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Corporal Pena. At this time, we usually recognize any representatives, former members, or mayors of the City Council. If you're out there in telephone land, it's good to have you listening tonight. We will move on to item number three, which is public comments. And under this, I will remind everybody again that you have three minutes to speak, but it is not on any agenda item, and that council will not respond. Do we have anybody wishing to speak? If you do wish to speak, please state your name, and your address, and your question. All right, we're not hearing anybody, so we will move on to agenda item number four. The consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We need to ask if there's any public comment on the consent agenda before we proceed.
Is there any comment on the consent agenda? Okay, and once again, we're hearing none. We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion was by Councilman Harris and seconded by Councilwoman Janet Court. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item number five is the bank statement, check registered through February 29, 2020. This item is for information only. Item number six, consider a resolution.
Would anybody like to speak on this item?
Would anybody like to speak on this item? Authorizing the mayor to sign a loan truck risk allocation agreement with Sidens Martin Emergency Group LLC to use 2,000 model Pierce aerial platform, 100-foot ladder truck for normal operational use for the Katy Fire Department. Once again, is there anybody who would like to speak on this item? Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Court and seconded by Councilwoman Stockdick. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 6B, awarding bid for sanitary sewer lift station renovation to Joe Lux Enterprises LLC, Conroe, Texas, in the amount of $257,000. Total project cost is $312,310. This contract bid amount contingencies, engineering, surveying, inspections is all included. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item?
Mayor, I do want to call council's attention that we will be using a combination of unbudgeted funds from the reserve at Enterprise in the amount of $133,645, and we have budgeted $178,665 to cover this project.
Could you repeat the Enterprise fund number?
Both of them are coming out of Enterprise. One's coming out of Reserve Enterprise, and one's coming out of Enterprise budget.
Okay, thank you.
The reserve was the first number, $133,645.
I understand, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Duran Dowdell and seconded by Councilwoman Stockdick. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item number seven, consider an ordinance declaring a public health emergency prohibiting community gatherings and providing for a fine in amount not to exceed $2,000 for each offense. Ms. McGrew, can you read that caption, please?
An ordinance of the City of Katy, Texas, declaring a public health emergency, providing for a fine in an amount not to exceed $2,000 for each offense.
Is there anyone who is listening by teleconference that would like to speak on Having none, do I have a motion?
If I may, I'd like to explain to the council just one addition as to what's in your packet. Currently, in your packet, it has declared the emergency, and we would follow the governor's guidelines. What I would like for you to, in your motion, to include that if those guidelines are amended by the governor, that this ordinance would follow the amended guidelines. So you would not have to come back and amend that again. Because it appears from the discussion that the governor's going to look at some amended guidelines. And if so, that you would not have to come back, we would just follow the amended guidelines from the governor.
Okay. Item 7A was declaring a public health emergency prohibiting community gatherings and providing for a fine in the amount not to exceed $2,000 for each offense, as advised by the governor of the state of Texas in his declaration. Motion by Chris Harris, seconded by Councilwoman Stockdick. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
This is Janet. So this is kind of a generic thing. I don't see anything that deals with like, any kind of, and maybe it's a different policy or something, anything that deals with non-city, nonessential personnel, and how that's going to be handled? Should that be separate from this?
Yes, ma'am. That is not something that in an ordinance, that this regulatory ordinance that you would deal with, that's what the mayor, and as far as his allocation of personnel, that he deals with that, on a personnel standpoint.
Okay.
Not the council and the regulatory aspect.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
I move to amend it. Frank Carroll, I move to amend it on advice of the city attorney to include any amendments or supplements to the governor's general order eight. Good?
Yes, sir.
I move to make that amendment.
Second the amendment.
Can you repeat that, Councilman?
It would be to, that if you pass this ordinance, that it would include any future amendments by the governor of the governor's order. The current governor's order is incorporated into this, and if the governor amends the requirements, that our ordinance will follow the changes, will follow those changes. That's what the amendment is.
So my amendment is a section three, adding any amendments or supplements?
Yes.
That's what my amendment is?
My second still holds. Now we vote on the amendment.
We discuss the amendment, and then we vote on the amendment.
Okay. We're going to amend it. I'm going to let you explain that, Frank, because I don't have the wording down that you were using.
Yes, sir. And I think we can also leave this to Art to work it out.
I'll wordsmith it.
To wordsmith it, but what we're amending is, right now, we've got general order G808. Instead of having to come back, and if that is amended or supplemented by the governor during this crisis, instead of coming back and revoting on the ordinance, it'll include the amendments or supplements to that order.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Now we go vote on the main motion.
Now vote on the main motion.
Yes, sir.
It's the same, same motion and second.
Any discussion?
Any discussion on the amendment?
No.
On the vote?
Main motion.
On the main motion.
It's on the main motion.
On the amendment.
And the main motion.
And the main motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 7B, ordinance postponing the May 2, 2020, general officers election in the City of Katy to the November 3, 2020, Uniform Election Code pursuant to section 418.016 of the Texas Government Code and in accordance with the State of Texas Secretary of State Election Advisory Number 2020-12. Ms. McGrew, can you read that caption, please?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Katy, Texas, postponing the general election previously called for Saturday, May 2, 2020, to November 3, 2020, as allowed by proclamation of the governor in the order to City Council members authorizing execution of joint election contract for the November 3, 2020 election, providing a severability clause, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone listening via teleconference that would like to speak on this item?
At this time, we're hearing no comments.
We're hearing no comments from the public on this agenda item. Are we sure we're working?
I know the people on Zoom are hearing because we've received that feedback.
And I'm also having a request to speak up and say our name beforehand. So this was Chris Harris.
And look at the chat. And see if people are putting in that, that they're not able to speak if they were trying.
All I've heard is that they are hearing us loud and clear, and I've received one chat that says, please postpone it. From a Teresa. I will call the line to verify that it's ringing. Can you hear?
Sierra is speaking, did y'all hear? Yeah?
No, we can't hear anyone speaking out.
It's the line, right?
We heard the, we heard the, we heard the word.
Look, he said right now there's a gentleman speaking.
Hello, this is Becky.
For those of you that can hear me, I apologize for the inconvenience of all this. It's pretty confusing trying to do this for a first time and get all of this equipment to match up.
Hello, I'm still here.
Becky, you can hang up and try to recall in on that phone.
I hope Jacob recalled now.
Anyone that can hear us, I'd like to thank you for your patience, and we're trying to correct this issue now.
Please enter your password, followed by the pound key.
Which one?
You are now a leader. Thank you.
Please enter your account or follow the button.
I'm getting a lot of people saying they can hear us.
But they can't speak.
Yeah.
Do we want to be a 15, or do we want to be a 13?
You want to be a 15, as a leader.
Mr. Police Chief, if you're on there, could you, could you talk and see if we can hear?
I hear plenty of people talking as a dialed-in member, but they's not going through that conference yet. Hold on, there's a, we're not resolving the two-way issue.
Please enter your password, followed by the pound key.
Is there a way for me to?
Thank you.
I was about, I was about.
Okay, I got, I got that. Your feedback is too close. Hello, is anybody out there?
Hello? I can hear you.
Hello?
I can hear you, and we can hear you now.
Okay, we can hear.
Somebody give me some, start off, somebody give me their names. Okay, hold on. Okay, somebody give me a name. Okay, Paul?
Saul, DoShang? Yes, yes.
Okay, Paul, go ahead.
I would like to, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
They need to stay there.
Okay, all right, everybody needs to turn the phone, answer just a little bit. Paul, we're going to let you.
The line is, I'm on the line, it's dysfunctional.
Okay, now we did that, okay.
Okay, keep her, all right.
Paul?
Paul O'Shea.
Paul O'Shea, go ahead.
Name and address.
Okay, I work in the healthcare field, and this whole thing is all I know, but it changes daily. I would like, I think we should table the, on the elections until maybe the April meeting to see where this thing goes and to have a little bit more information. So we might not even have to cancel it, this whole thing. I mean, I know everybody's hoping for the best, but, you know, I think we should table it till the April meeting.
Okay. Paul, can you give your address?
Saul. 5714 Gardena Range, 80 Texas, 77493.
Okay, sir, we appreciate that.
All right, thank you guys so much.
Okay, who else do we have out there?
Can you hear me? This is Roger, 6702 Tiger Drive.
Okay, Roger. Okay, Roger, hang on a second. You got it? Okay, go, Roger.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you know, if you listen to the evening news this evening, Judge Haldago is possibly considering a stay-at-home order, as they did in Dallas, close recently, strongly suggest for a senior, as everybody knows, if you postpone the election until November 3, and not have it on May 2. It's too dangerous, and what's going on, and a big pity like Dallas are closing possibly Houston, I strongly suggest you vote to postpone it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Roger. If somebody else out there wants to talk.
If you'd like to speak, please give us your name and your address.
6702 Tiger Drive.
Got it, thanks, sir.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Come on.
Have seen no others on Zoom. We had just had the one commenter.
Okay. Okay, appreciate everybody chiming in or giving your feedback.
There's a raised hand.
Corbin? If you'd like to make this up, go ahead.
Mr. Bradford? He's left the Zoom chat. He may have accidentally hit it, we don't know.
All right, nobody else wishes to speak? Do I have a motion? Motion by Councilman Carroll, second by Councilwoman Court. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, question for the City Secretary. If we did delay it to the April, we don't meet next till April 13.
No, we do not.
So would that give you enough time and?
We will have already funded a good portion of the election by that point. We will have already sent out mail ballots. I will have had to conduct all my logic testing and spend thousands of dollars on publication. I will spend the majority of my budget before that date. The only thing that will be left is the pay for the workers.
Now, my concern on that, and I've heard that issue, is sending the ballots out already by that point.
April 2 is the deadline for me to mail ballots.
So you'd have two weeks of outgoing mail ballots, and what would happen to those?
If we postpone after that date, they would get held over?
They get held till November. They get held, and then they're counted in the November election. So those people would then not get to vote, they would have already voted.
They would have already voted, and would, so they would not be voting then in November? Is that?
They would, because they would have, they would have voted already. Because if they vote, they would have voted now, and that vote carries over to November.
Okay. So if we did wait, that would put them at a disadvantage, being that their vote, they wouldn't be able to be, go through the election season. I guess is the question I'm getting at. And those ballots just stay in your office until November?
Yes, I would have to store them in locked boxes until I'm able to convene the early voting ballot board.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any more questions for Chris? Okay, this is Janet. I have a couple of questions. This is Janet, and I have a couple of questions. So like Mr. Banks said, that Judge Haldago was thinking about shutting down Harris County. If she were to do that, and with paper ballots, they say that the virus sits on paper, so if those ballots come in, would you have to do any kind of decontamination of those paper ballots? If the virus was still going on?
She would not be able to, because she wasn't able to touch it. They come in there, come in sealed, and she wasn't able to open them. They come in sealed envelope, and.
It's inside another envelope.
Inside another envelope.
But even the outside envelope, would you have to decontaminate the entire thing, since it was paper?
We do not have a system in place right now. We do not have any PPE, personal protective equipment, in order to do any of this. I mean, this is uncharted territory for us.
Yes.
So we don't know yet if we proceed with the election. Will we glove our workers? Will we Lysol or some way fumigate the ballots that come in? Or if we'll simply store them somewhere and someone not touch them for a period of time? We do not have a system in place for that yet.
Okay. So if we decide to postpone the, you know, the decision, making the decision, not the election, but the decision, and then, then we are in a lock-in, you work from home, all that kind of stuff, like Dallas and some of the other cities are doing, would we have the ability to hold a council meeting from our homes to discuss and vote at that time?
Yes.
So this is, this is all going to, this is not a one-time setup?
It would be just like this, only you would be phoning in just like the audience.
And my recommendation, counsel, is that this meeting like this should be the last one that you have until this is all clear. Because we have enough of you councilmembers who are in the danger zone as far as age and underlying health issues, that you should not be in a room like this for an extended period of time. So my recommendation to you is that any future council meeting that you have, that it be done by teleconference. Now, that's going to be your choice to do that, but with, and you got to make that personal decision based on how you and your family want to operate, but with the age and any underlying health conditions that you may have, this is not a way that you should really conduct this meeting during this time.
Okay. And along those lines, since you bring up public safety, Bill, you and I had a conversation earlier today. Would you tell the audience, kind of, or tell us what your feelings are about this?
Okay, this is Mayor Hastings. My feelings on this, I have, I have to remain neutral on this. This is an issue that I've watched go back and forth on Facebook and different forums. There's been a lot of pressure on City Council. There's been a lot of pressure on City Council to vote one way or another. But you know, at this time, I'd like to make everybody cognizant of the fact that we have a job to do. We are the officials that y'all elected to run this city and to make these decisions. Now, I have not polled council, I don't know what we're fixing to, I don't know what they're fixing to vote. But whatever they vote, they have apparently listened to all the chatter on this. They've listened to all of the suggestions, all of the thoughts, and many of these were just completely wrong and not able to even really be looked at. But what everybody needs to know is that we're going into a period of time where we're going to have to make decisions that not everybody is going to like. These are tough decisions, they weigh heavy on our hearts to make these. But what council decides tonight, whatever that may be, whether it's to hold the election in May, or whether it's to move it to November. I think that they have done the best that they can do to listen to the people. But right now, it's not personal feelings we have to look at, we have to look at the safety and the well-being of this community that y'all have charged us with. So, with that, uh.
If I can speak, we actually, Corbin Bradford was able to get back onto Zoom and has submitted their comments through chat. For whatever reason, it wouldn't let me, or my microphone, but based on the fact that our citizens are so busy getting groceries, caring for kids, family, and juggling work from home, I don't believe our residents can make an informed decision on who they would like to vote for. Those campaigning can't even actively spread their message. I vote to postpone, as the governor of Texas recommended. I have a pregnant wife, and I would not send her to the polls and risk her health. End of comment.
Is there any other comments that somebody would like to, to give? Councilman Harris?
Uh, for the City Secretary, if we have the election in November, and this is an ongoing issue, will we be handling the election, or would Harris County have advice for us on how to handle these type of, this type of scenario? And what protective action would happen then?
You, you get to decide, but my, my recommendation is that, is that you allow Harris County to handle the election. Because coming out of this scenario, there will be so many different, different variables that it's gonna be, gonna be hard for, for us individually to keep up with it. Plus, and when it comes down to us trying to, trying to decide the workers, and getting enough workers to handle that, depending on, on who wants to be in a situation where they have to sit in front of a bunch of people coming by for, for hours at a time, us being able to find workers to do that, whereas Harris County, or Fort Bend County, whichever one you choose, they, they can tell us, they will handle these elections if we ask them to. And that's what they do, they do joint elections.
Okay, but on the safety issue for the workers, if, I assume if Harris County is handling the election, they would have the resources to have the protective gear?
Correct.
Because the election's going forward in November, no matter what?
That's correct. And they will, they will, they will be prepared to handle our election and all the other elections that they have to handle, and will have the procedures in, um, in place. Whereas we would have to try to define those, those special protective stuff just for our election. And, and more than likely, since everybody's that's gonna go, is gonna be joint, joint. We may have to send our people to somewhere else to vote also. Because you may have to have somebody that's gotta go to E S D, or somewhere, gotta go somewhere else to vote for some of the other elections. And so that's why, my recommendation, but you guys can, can decide that. You don't have to decide that tonight, but you have that option in your orders, if you postpone it, then you can decide if you want to have them conduct the election.
Becky, you have a question, this is Jennifer. Um, is it cheaper on us to actually use one of the counties to help us do this?
It is cheaper for us to contract the election, yes.
Thanks.
I have a follow-up question to Councilman, Frank Carroll. I have a follow-up to Councilman or Harris's question. Uh, don't we have a request in for PPE, right, personal protective equipment, right now that's on hold with the state? Uh, that's a question to, uh, City Administrator Byron Abair.
Uh, yes, we do. We do have that currently right now.
And, and when I say it's on hold, meaning that we, we have not received the personal protective equipment that we have requested for our first responders, true?
Correct, correct.
So, um, to echo what Bill said, I think first and foremost, we've gotta consider public safety and the protection of not only our residents, this is Janet, by the way, of, of our residents, and our city employees that would, would have to, um, run the poll. Um, but I do wanna address some of the questions that I saw residents had on Barry's Facebook post. So, there's been, um, a lot of different suggestions on how to vote. So, what legally do we have to do, or, or, what are our legal options for voting? Different types of voting? Do you, do you understand what I'm asking?
I do. You can either vote early voting or election day. Under both of those, we have three categories, ballot by mail, and in person. Now, for our handicapped and disabled, we also have curb side in person, where they do not have to exit the vehicle and come inside. They notify someone inside, and we can literally take the, the Dow unit apart, take it out for them to cast their ballot and bring it in. So, it, it in a sense is a drive-through, if you will, and that, and that, but it falls under in person. So really, you're voting by mail, or you're voting in person.
Okay, so, um, one of the options that people I've seen is, um, to allow, um, online voting. Is that allowed?
No, it's not allowed, and there's no way for us to create a secure system, nor are we legally able to design our own voting system. At, the city currently contracts with Hart, we use Hart's equipment and their licensing. And our central accounting station is literally a computer that can never be hooked up to the internet. So that it is not, um.
It is secure, from hacking and that type of thing. Um, another one, um, can the, um, vote by mail be opened up to everybody?
No, no. To, to vote, early voting by mail, there are four, four categories that, that you eligible to, to do that. That's gonna be whether or not you're, you're not gonna be there going in the, in the county on that day.
Right.
If you're disabled, whether confined in the penitentiary, or something.
Over the age of sixty-five?
Or you're sixty-five.
Or older.
Sixty-five or older. Though, those people are eligible to, to, to vote, early vote by mail. And that's, that's called, we used to call it the old school people, we called it absentee voting. That's called early voting by, but not in person.
So, so this, um, uh, this virus or whatever would not be considered, um, there's a, a clause in that? Uh, those, those rules?
No.
So, okay, you know what clause I'm talking about?
Yes, the, the disability clause, you have to decide individually whether or not you are, are disabled. There's not a, a broad, broad category.
Okay.
That because you're suffering. Because, but the language does say sick, sick or disabled. So if you're sick and you qualify, then you, you can go, what you, what accosting people that would use that is that if there's an abnormal number of, of those type of votes, then you, if you subject yourself to challenge, challenge all of those votes, because there have been investigations about that. Because, you know, there's a certain number of those early voting by mail, early votes by mail that you get. If there's a huge increase in that, then, but depending on where we are in the stage, it may be okay. If it was, if it was hell close and people could say that, if you look at the numbers, but, but no. There's not, not, not a blanket, well, because of this virus, I'm even qualified as sick or disabled. You have to make that individual decision whether or not you're sick or disabled, and then choose whether you wanna vote in person.
Okay. Um, and then, one of the other things I saw on Facebook, which I think Chris actually addressed it earlier, but just to make clear, that, um, that November third date, that is fixed and protected by law and will never, ever change.
Unless, unless Congress changes that date.
But then you'd have to go through Congress, they'd have to do a bill, they'd have to go to the Senate, and it'd be a whole big rigmarole.
Right.
And chances of that happening is slim to none.
Except for, there's one other caveat, one other caveat, I doubt if you can do it, the governor could also. The governor could change that date.
The, at the federal level?
No, the governor could change our date for this election, just like he set this date.
Oh.
The governor set the date, the governors gave, gave us the options to say, you can either do it now, or you can do it in November. The governor could have said in August day, or another day. Those of you who've been around a long time, been around municipal government, you remember, we used to have four days. And August used to be one of the uniform days. But the governor chose to say you could either do May, or you can do, do November, that's the governor's choice.
So the city didn't have a choice?
No, we don't have a choice.
Okay, okay. Uh, let me see.
Is there any other discussion?
Um, I'm sorry, yes. This is Janet again. So, um, alright, I've been kinda looking, and I see that there's several other cities have already voted to postpone, and there's others that are considering it. Um, do you, you work for other cities, have any of your other cities voted yet on?
Some have voted, and, and depending on, on where they, where they were in their election process.
Uh-huh.
Some, some were, some have voted to postpone, some have voted, have voted to have it, the ones who voted have normally had something that was uncontested or won on about, or something like that, but it's been, it's been kinda catch and catch can.
Okay.
Tonight, we'll give a clear picture. Because when it came down late last week, then people have just now posted their meetings for Monday, well, really, Tuesday, Thursday. Really, we'll give a clear picture on Tuesday, which is basically the last day, we're telling people they're gonna do it. Because when it came down last week, people were just now getting it settled, it's seven, two hours to hold a meeting. But it's, nobody can read it right now, because it depends, if all you had left in your election was a charter ballot, they've encapsulated them. And, and if all, if everybody else, they were uncontested, and they just, they're, they're just naming those, and then moving on, so.
Okay, let me see if I had anything else. What's a normal election, um, cost a city? You have a ballpark?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five to thirty, unless we move that, they would.
Okay.
Runoff, of course, would increase that amount.
Okay.
It would, it wouldn't be twofold, but it would be probably thirty-five, forty, would be somewhere up there.
Well, and that's, kind of, may I have a follow-up question? That's under normal circumstances, right? That's not when you have to have sanitation, personal protective equipment, maybe additional shifts in workers because people are not.
It does not include that.
That's, under normal circumstances, best case scenario, it's forty thousand, not the drive-up COVID center, special handling of ballots, wiping down of every machine after every voter type election that we'd be talking about here.
I agree, and I would like to say that I, I, under administration's guidance, I requested that this item be on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
Because I am at that point in my budget where I have not used a lot of the materials that I have purchased in example mail ballots. And, and I'm at a publication, translation, uh, training point where I, I'm either putting a lot of money into this election that will not be recoupable, or I can stop now and most of it can be used in the next election.
Follow-up question for that, uh, City Administrator Byron Abair, this is Frank Carroll. Uh, is the city in better financial footing now as we were two weeks ago? Or are we in worse financial footing than we were two weeks ago?
Um, Councilman Carroll, as you know, the city relies on sales tax a lot. So, we are definitely at, at a point where we are looking at everything that our budget has. So when Becky approached me with this, I was like, if we can save, let's see if we can save. So, our financial position in the future is, is, is going to be challenging. I, I would say that.
And when you say challenging, the, the mall, as I understand it, is shut down, true?
True.
And would you characterize the mall as an important economic driver for the budget of the city?
It is, it has been the economic engine for the city of Katy since it opened.
And, and certainly, we're hoping that there's gonna be a great rebound, and the end of the year is gonna be fantastic, and we're gonna get all that money back, but are you budgeting that way, or are you taking precautions right now?
We're taking a lot of precautions.
That's my follow-up question, thank you.
I, I just wanna say that I, I, I am not comfortable that we have the means to protect our residents when they come in to vote, because I remember, you come in, you have that book that everybody has to touch, everybody has to sign, you know, showing their ID, that type of thing. I'm not comfortable that we have the means to protect you guys that are working the polls, um, especially if we've requested protective equipment and we're probably on the bottom of the, of the waitlist, that protective equipment is gonna go to first responders before it comes to us, I would think. Our city employees. And I'm looking at you, Byron, or Mayor, okay?
You're correct.
I'm correct, okay. So, I, I'm just, my main focus is on public safety and keeping our residents safe and protected from this. And that's all I have to say.
I'll go ahead and step in and echo, Frank Carroll, I'll go ahead and echo those comments. I think we're all in agreement that public safety is, is number one. Um, and elections are, are sacred, and this has been a very conflicting thing for me personally. Because I, I, I believe that liberties are, are of paramount importance, and I believe that we sit up here protecting the liberties of, of the constituents that we serve. But at a certain point, there is a public safety element. And, you know, I was thinking about how sacred voting is, but then I was thinking about that on Sunday, when I was worshiping God at home. Because the sacred act of worshiping God in a congregation was not something that was an adult and responsible thing to do. It was gonna put people in danger, people who I love, people who I worship with, it would put them in danger for us to get together. And so we did worship at home over, we had a tele, you know, they did it on Facebook Live and everything. And it was the responsible thing to, to stop congregational worship at that time. And I think while it is sacred to vote, I think it's also the responsible and adult thing to not have people congregating at the polls, just like we don't have people congregating in churches. As sacred as it is, we have to prioritize health and safety. And while I struggled with this as a, as a conservative, as a, as a constitutional person who, who cherishes the Constitution, I also cherish Becky and all the work that she does. And I, I just can't envision, I've talked to people, I've asked people, how do we do this? What could we do to sanitize every surface after every voter, how do we do the social distancing? And no one has came up with a good solution to ensure that the folks that, that serve this city and are serving the city diligently right now, no one's came up with a solution that can protect them. And I can't look at Becky and her staff and tell them that we can guarantee your safety, or even come close to guaranteeing their safety. And when you think about it, you come in, you sign something. Well, we may be able to disinfect the voting machine after every person, because it can live for four days on propylene plastic, but we can't sanitize the sign-in sheets paper. Can't sanitize every single table, we can't sanitize, maybe somebody touched the doorknob on the way out. And all of those things, all of those surfaces are gonna carry this virus that can be bad even for young people. And so, with all of that in mind, I think we should heed the governor's call. He asked us to do one single thing, you, me, all of us, right now, the governor's asked us to do one thing. And what he said was, "I strongly encourage local officials to take advantage of these waivers and postpone their elections until November." Right now, the state's focus is responding to COVID nineteen, including social distancing and avoiding large gatherings. By delaying this election, our local election officials can assist in that effort. The governor, I think is a great governor, I think he's been very good, he was good during Harvey, I think he's doing good now. And I can't see. And I can't see a reason why we should break with the governor and ignore the one request he's made to us, which is to postpone this election so that all resources can go to combating this pandemic. And, you know, something we've talked about before, and it's very important, we have to be unified. We just pledged to, to the Texas flag, and we said, one state under God, one and indivisible. And right now, more than ever, this state needs to be one and indivisible. We need to be one and indivisible with the governor, we need to be one and indivisible with the mayor, we need to be one and indivisible with our police chief and our city secretary and all of those folks. And we need to be one and indivisible as a council. And I think that that means us standing with the governor, heeding his call and pushing this election. Sorry for taking up so much time, but this is something that is, is very troubling, very trying for me, but something that's also near and dear to me as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I wrote this already, so sorry, I'm gonna be a little lengthy too. But, uh, I, just two things that just came to mind, because Byron and me, we can argue about this all we want. I, the money doesn't matter to me on, elections are important, but what put it over is, we've requested the safety equipment, we don't have it, we're not gonna meet until, in half-time, people's ballots will be out, they could possibly not be cast for six months. Lots can change between now and then, so for me, that's very important, and solidifies my decision. But first of all, I wish we could have this election on a normal schedule, but I've spent many hours visiting with business leaders, teachers, and other citizens, and our number one priority has to be about keeping our citizens safe. Our well-respected governor and mayor has asked for our help to flatten the curve. Nobody likes this situation, but we do have a duty to assist the greater good. And when I was elected, I promised to listen to citizens, and the majority I've spoken to have requested this election date be moved. Certainly, I don't enjoy this, I don't think anybody up here does, and, don't let me start crying here. I did cry this morning in the mayor's office, but, uh, just sick that we have to do this, it's sad for the community. Um, I've had a great conversation with people that are running for election, not involved, Sam Pearson, if you're listening. I, I cried for about twenty minutes after the ten-minute prayer we had the other day, and it was, uh, very sweet. Uh, Sandy Smith, Anita Mancini, Diane Walker, my colleagues, no matter which way we go, I know this city's gonna be unified afterwards, so this is a tough decision, but, uh, I hope that we all support what's best for the community and for not only the citizens, but the staff and, and everybody that's casting a vote. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Becky, as far as your, this is Councilman Del, Becky, as far as your, your poll workers, do you have commitments from all of your poll workers that would, would typically know that they're retiring, they're, they're in, in the, they're in the line of fire, so to speak?
I have.
Do you have commitments from them, and what would it take to replace them, uh, from a training standpoint?
We have not polled our workers since we did the ordinance calling the election. We chose not to at this time, because as everyone's discussed, this is a very fluid situation. So it's hard for people, for them to say, they'll report in about twenty-eight days now. They would, uh, two of my judges typically help me as early voting clerks. I, I have not asked them to make that commitment yet, but, um, I would imagine if it continues to evolve, they would not want to. However, I, I hope that they would, in the event that they did not, it would be difficult. We, uh, we get a light training session, city of Katy's very blessed, we have some very dedicated volunteers, they come back year after year. So that means I get to do a crash course and say, remember, these are the law changes, what do you need from me? And they run a tight ship. I mean, they know when to pick their stuff up, they know how to fill out every single form. And if you wanna see, uh, why this will never be a paperless world, please volunteer on Election Day. Because it is an amazing amount of paper that goes through those offices. But these, uh, men and women, they know how to do that job. So it would take a, quite a bit of training for someone new to be able to run the polling location independently.
I took, oh, this is Councilman Del again, I, I took, uh, a tally of all the emails and the text messages that I've received. I, uh, uh, have approximately fifteen that are in favor of moving, and nine in favor of keeping it current. I, I hope there would be a lot more, uh, interaction from the community, uh, but based on this, uh, it's not a, uh, an overarching whole of the, of the community. I have, I've seen some of this stuff on Facebook, and I have seen some of the things, and heard from some folks expressing their opinions about this process. Um, it, 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 if, I'm like Councilman Harris, I would, I would prefer that we move forward, but it's a matter of public safety. And I agree with Frank Carroll, the governor has given us a needed, and why should I go against what the governor has put out for us? And a matter of public safety, we don't know. There is too many underlying factors, and it's rapidly moving, rapidly changing. And so, um, moving forward, I think in the, in the matter of public health, safety and well-being of the folks in this city, as you said, Mayor, safety and well-being of everyone, not just a select few. And it's, it is, it is, it has been a, a trying time, you know? I'm skinny enough, I don't need to lose any more weight, you know? So it, uh, it, it gets to the point where you realize, I, you know, I haven't eaten today, because it's, it's weighing on everyone very heavily. I, uh, um, yeah. Yes, that's all I have.
Anyone else, any more discussion? I'm gonna go ahead and call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number eight, Councilman Reports. I believe I'm gonna start this evening with Councilman Carroll.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Turn my microphone on. I, I just wanna say, appreciate the, the leadership, uh, both at the executive level and the mayor's office. The city council has been exhibiting, as well as the staff, um, this, these are trying times, there's something that I've never seen in my lifetime, but I haven't had that much of a lifetime, so I've asked people with longer lifetimes if this is something they've ever seen, and this is nothing they've ever seen either. So we're all trying to do what's right, we're trying to come together as a community, and I think we're doing that. And I, I just want to publicly say that, uh, I was over at M K T this weekend, uh, working with some folks. We were shopping for aloe vera gel, and we were able to find some, and so, um, they turned out thirty gallons of hand sanitizer for the Waller County Sheriff's Office that was picked up, as you can imagine, that's hard to source, uh, as well as distributed. You know, I, I don't know how close to a hundred gallons of hand sanitizer they, they've distributed in the community, but it's pretty close to a hundred, and they've got the makens for another hundred, uh, to go out as well. And I know that that's just one example of the community coming together and using the resources they have in order to help us through this trying time. So it's just a wonderful feeling to be a part of this community and to see local businesses, uh, helping out. I've spoke with many local business leaders, as, as Councilman Harris said, he had as well. Um, and, you know, these are trying times, but on the whole, I've seen a group that is resilient, I've seen a group that is, I don't wanna say upbeat, but certainly trying to keep on a, a, a strong face. And, uh, despite the challenges, I think that we're going to do well as a community. And I'm looking forward to rebounding, I'm looking forward to working with you all through, through these trying times. And so that's all I've got, thank you.
Disco.
Um, I just wanna encourage everybody to try and make a best, the best they can of a terrible situation. Um, I know a lot of you who, there's young moms out there that normally work, and now they're home with kids, and they're having to school, you know, try and teach them and keep them entertained. I've seen lots of good ideas on, on Facebook for activities for kids, so just try and, and do, look at some of those activities and just try and make the best of it. Check on your, if you have elderly neighbors, check on your neighbors, make sure that they're doing okay, from a, from a safe distance. Um, and also, if you have, um, a lot of people have been stocking up, and if you find that you've got, you bought too many cans of beans, or too many bags of beans, or whatever, um, Katy Christian Ministry Food Pantry is in need of some non-perishable food items. So if you've got some extras, while we can all kinda sort of move about, you might wanna consider dropping those off to, to them. And then just take this seriously, um, stay at home, follow the guidelines that the governor is putting out and that the mayor may have to put out in some, at some time, and just, um, take it seriously, folks, and stay safe. Thank you.
Councilman Del.
I think as Councilwoman Cor said, stay safe. My wife is a high-risk candidate, she's had pneumonia twice in the last five years, and I have to consider my family in, in this situation also. I went to daycare, get something from the pharmacy for her, and on the way home, I saw our fire department with an ambulance and a fire truck assisting a neighbor out to their vehicle. And that individual had a high fever. So folks, we don't know, it could be in our community already. There are others who are self-quarantined, staying at home, we don't have the testing facility. But as I understand, it is opening up right over here at Legacy Stadium. And so that's close to home. That, this is serious, it's a serious situation. Regardless of our own opinions, it's here. Um, is it conspiracy theory? I don't know. I've had people ask, what do you think about the personal? You know, personally, there are all, all so many different things that have been put out there, what is the truth? Our government says that we should do these things, and barring a clampdown, you know, I'm gonna do my best to follow. Um, I, I hope for the best, I do not, um, wish anything on anybody, I hope that everyone, like, follows what we're supposed to do, remain calm, do what you need to do, take care of yourselves, take care of your family. I would like to add that, congratulations to Frank Carroll on the birth of his daughter. Thank you. It's, uh, it's a new world for you, and your shopping expenses are gonna go high. Good luck with that.
Also, woman's topic?
Um, I'd just like to say right now that I'm really, um, I'm praying for our community, for the citizens in our community. There's a lot of us that are, uh, business owners here, local business owners, and this is affecting all of us, our lives, our families, everything. And so I would just ask right now that our community come together, and that we pray for one another, we pray for the business owners, and we just, we pray that, that this goes away, and so that's really, that's where my focus is right now.
Councilman Harris.
Thank you, um, just wanna echo some thoughts that my very good friend Dan Porter had posted the other day, and I put it on my, uh, Facebook page, uh, great guy, I asked him if I could quote him, and he said yes. And he summed it up very nicely, and this is such a trying time for everybody. I know all of us are, or will be going through many emotions, trials, and tribulations during this time. Some are losing their jobs, some their health, some just enduring stress of the unknown. I'm not sure how long or had, how bad times will get, however, I know we are a nation of strength and faith, and this too shall pass. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chris. All right, moving on to item number nine, and that's my report. And, you know, ladies and gentlemen, this is, this is a time that, uh, it's completely unprecedented. I got chastised the other day for saying that I didn't know what was gonna come tomorrow. But you know, I'm gonna step out and tell you, we don't know what we're facing tomorrow. As a city, we all have to be united. And I think you have witnessed council tonight probably be more united than we've been in the last seven months. And if anything can come good out of this, that's one thing. Because we all are here for one reason, and that's to provide your safety, your security, and your well-being. Most of all, your well-being be your, being your health. And some of the decisions that I'm not gonna guarantee, but I think are coming, are probably not gonna be easy decisions, and they're certainly not gonna be liked by everyone. But please keep in mind that we are here to serve you. I will be here every day until this is over, except maybe on Saturdays and Sundays if I can. But you know what, our, our focus right now as a council is on our community. Y'all are the most important things that we have. We are united, and, you know, it, this goes back to, you know, everybody knows I can get along-winded, and I'm, I'm trying to cut this short. But it starts with basic hygiene, the same things that your grandmothers popped you on the back of the head for when you were younger and told you, by God, boy, you better wash your hands. We need to just observe some simple rules to begin with. And you know, I think that a lot of the things we see coming, or that I feel like are coming, are because we're not following directions. When they say that we have a six-foot space, you go in the grocery stores and people are standing basket to basket, and they're not gonna let you in, they're not gonna move out of your way, they're not gonna step back. When we go out in public, you see, you know, exercise, physical activity is one of the greatest benefits to health. But when you see groups of people, five and six together, walking along the jogging trail, and they're arm-in-arm, slapping each other on their sweaty backs, this is not good hygiene. So who can stop this virus? We can, and we can do it by following the instructions that people a lot smarter than us are giving us. Basic things that we can do, and we're not doing them. When they tell you, you need to stay in the house, we're not staying in the house, we're still going over to so-and-so's barbecue, and there may be ten, twelve, fifteen people there. Lot of times, you're picking up a beer that doesn't belong to you and taking a drink. I mean, come on, guys, we got to, we got to get with the program. Art's fixing to cut me off. But like, like Councilman Carroll said, and I hadn't quit yet.
I'm sorry.
Councilman Carroll, when he talked about the liberty of voting, that is a sacred event. That's what this coun, this country was formed on, was our ability to vote. This is, and, and like he said, now we're, we can't go to church, we're having church virtually. Well, it works, but it's not the same, that we all can't get together, shake hands, hug each other, kiss those babies, hug them up, play with them in the middle of the lobby floor. Times have changed, and we're going to have to get with the program, and to do that, we're going to have to make decisions that we do not like. This has been a, a, a real tumultuous thing on everybody in this room, not just council, certainly not me, but our staff. They're, they're working diligently for the same thing we are, for your safety, well-being, and security. Our fire, our police, our public works. We've been asked to figure out who is an essential employee and who is non-essential. Everybody that works in this city is essential. We have nobody that we have come to a resolution that you're non-essential. Dang, guys, if they were non-essential, why are we keeping them? Everybody has a job here, and it's not gonna quit. When everybody else is at home, glued to CNN, or Oprah Winfrey, or Maury Povich, we're still here, and we're here for you. This community, I think this is a chance that we can be united as we have never, ever been united before. When you see the negativity on Facebook, shut it down. If you can't get on there and pass on valid information or a warm, fuzzy thought, feeling or picture, stay off of it. I'm done. All of you, thank you for, I'd like to say, being here, but here again, we can't even hold a meeting in public anymore. But everybody take care, we are here for you, the phones are still working and we will be glad to try to answer your questions in an expedient manner, which is getting harder and harder to do, but I promise you, we'll be continuing to do it. So God bless every one of you, take care, wash your hands, take care of yourself so that you can take care of your family and others. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.